Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. Welcome to the April 2024 Hoboken Board of Education meeting. Thank you all for being here. If you are joining us this evening to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, please use the signup sheets located at the podium right down in front. Ms. Good, can you read the statement of compliance, please?
This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act NJSA 10:4-6. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on January 5th, 2024, which was the annual notice. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Publics Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on C A T V, Channel 77 and F I O S, Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in an electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Please rise. Let's go.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Good, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Ms. Calamatory?
Here.
Ms. Delira?
Here.
Mr. Delator?
Here.
Mr. Grana?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Cluffel?
Here.
Ms. Norwood?
Here.
Ms. McGurk?
Here.
You have a form.
Thank you, Ms. Good. We are going to begin our meeting as we usually do with student recognitions for the month of March. Student achievement is at the heart of every decision that is made here in the Hoboken Public School District, and we're so grateful to have each and every one of you here this evening. To kick off and run our recognition section, I turn the podium over to Assistant Superintendent Sandra Rodriguez Gomez.
Good evening and welcome to the student recognition portion of our meeting. We hope that you all had a restful and energizing spring break and are continuing to be as focused as ever. We're excited to honor our students tonight and curious to learn about their accomplishments and those that they will aim for in the near and distant future. I extend a heartfelt welcome to the members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, faculty, community members, students, and of course, their special guests, their families. It is always such a joy to stand before you and introduce our inspiring principles as they come up to the podium and share detailed information and anecdotes about the students being honored here this evening as the Students of the Month for March. We all realize that it is quite an accomplishment to be honored by your school and district community, and if you are one of the students tonight who will be honored, please don't ever forget this day and let it inspire many more winning moments. You are role models and peer mentors to the students in your classrooms and to those you pass in the hallways daily. Thank you for inspiring others and continuing to thrive in school and beyond. We are all very proud of each and every one of you and can't wait to hear regarding your academic journey. Usually, we begin with Joseph F. Brandt and its principal, Mr. Bartlett, but his...
Oh, she is? Okay, good. Then we'll begin as usual.
As has been our process, we will begin with the Joseph F. Brandt School and its principal, Mr. Bartlett. He will then introduce the Connors Vice Principal, Mr. Hamlin, and he will follow the same pattern, introducing our present, our next presenters, Principals Shannon, Sorfin, and Pica Pietra of Wallace Hoboken Middle and Hoboken High School. Each will celebrate both, each will celebrate their school's selection and, of course, pause for an important picture opportunity. Again, thank you for your attention and for being with us here this evening, and with that, I would ask Principal Bartlett to join me at the podium.
Thank you, Mrs. Rodriguez Gomez. Good night, uh, good evening, Dr. Johnson and members of the Board. At this time, I would like to ask Summer Martinez to come join me at the podium. Congratulations to Summer Martinez, the Joseph F. Brandt Elementary School Student of the Month for March 2024. Summer was nominated by her second-grade teacher, Ms. Babylonia. Ms. Babylonia said, "Summer has truly grown into an empathetic and understanding student. She works very hard on her work to understand that she needs to not only complete it, but be very thoughtful about everything she puts her mind to. She is extremely helpful to her friends and understands compassion and resilience on a whole other level. As principal, I've had the privilege of watching Summer grow socially and academically over the course of this school year, as well as her kindergarten and first grade years. I can say she's definitely not a second grader anymore. She is an almost third grader with the maturity and leadership skills that go along with it. Previously, Summers received the Kindness Award and was recognized as a Student of the Week. Summer represents the definition of leadership. Students gravitate towards her. She is extremely positive and hardworking, and she leads everyone else to be the same way. Leadership is a skill that is needed, especially when it comes to difficult situations or topics, and Summer is emerging as a true classroom leader in those instances. Summers hobbies include painting, playing sports, cheerleading, gymnastics, and yoga. Her favorite subjects are math, art, and music. Her favorite music to listen to is Drake, Cardi B, and Ice Spice. Summer wants to go to Princeton University because she said it's definitely a top-three college and has good rankings. After college, she wants to be a police officer, veterinarian, archaeologist, or doctor. When told she would be recognized here tonight in front of the Board of Education, Summer said, "It makes me feel really nice because I feel like when other people get Student of the Month, I'm happy for them. At Brandt, it's okay to express our feelings, and I've been wanting to get Student of the Month. It makes me feel good inside because my teachers like me and stick up for me, especially Ms. Babylonia, Ms. Herniak, Mrs. Ayello, and Mrs. Yu. I feel really good about being Student of the Month, and maybe other kids will want to get it, so they need to work hard and they will get it like me." And there is another fantastic example of Summers burgeoning leadership skills. Great job encouraging your peers to reach their goals. Please join me in a round of applause for our Brandt Student of the Month, Summer Martinez. At this time, I'd like to welcome to the podium the Vice Principal of Connors School, Mr. Jack Hamlin.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. I would like to call up Josie Margolis, our Connors Elementary Student of the Month. Josie Margolis, a second-grade student in Ms. Garcia's class, is being acknowledged for her exceptional academic dedication, creativity, and commendable character traits. Ms. Garcia shared that Josie's remarkable speaking skills, creativity, and strong work ethic serve as an inspiration to her peers. Her respectful demeanor towards others showcases her bright future aspirations. Josie's interests span across various subjects such as science, math, and reading, which she eagerly engages in. She actively participates in class discussions and collaborates well with her classmates. Josie values her family dearly, especially her sister Sydney, who's here with us tonight, and cherishes moments spent with her sister and her parents. Josie's passion for reading is evident through her variety of genre choices. Her favorite books include Diary of a Wimpy Kid and The Dork Diaries. Her consistently positive attitude and determination to do well make her a standout koala within the Connors School community. When speaking with Josie about being awarded Student of the Month, Josie explained that she loves art. She shared her aspirations to become a teacher or work in an animal hospital in the future. She was described by her peers as kind, helpful, and caring, and having known her for the last two years, I can wholeheartedly agree with their assessment. Josie's accomplishments in both academics and character are very commendable. She's a valuable member of the Connors Koala family and so deserving of this award. Please join me in congratulating Josie Margolis, the Student of the Month for March 2024. I'd like to now introduce the Principal of Wallace Elementary School, Mr. Martin Shannon.
Good evening, everyone. We are here tonight to celebrate Alexandra Shum, our Wallace School Student of the Month for March 2024. Alex is a fifth-grade scholar at Wallace and was nominated by her teacher, Ms. Reinauer, who said, "Alexandra is a shining star at Wallace School. She goes out of her way to get to know as many students, teachers, and staff members within the school building so she could greet them when she sees them daily. She always has a smile on her face and helps out her fellow classmates when they are sad or feeling down. As her principal, I appreciate her hard work, caring nature, and willingness to connect with everyone in the community. Her combination of positive energy and infectious happiness is the perfect complement to our school. I am very proud to be her principal. Alex makes everyone feel included and plays with everyone on the playground at recess. She has made tremendous progress in developing her math and reading skills this school year. She loves participating in science class with Ms. Versace and phys ed with Ms. Lisa. She loves to make small paper dolls and mermaids when she earns free time at school. She enjoys pottery class, sports, and skiing on the weekends. Ms. Dawn, her paraprofessional, had this to add about Alex. "I have known Alexandra since she was three years old. I have watched her grow up into this hard-working, caring, funny, respectful young woman. Alexandra loves meeting new people when she comes into our, when they come into our classroom and makes them feel welcomed. Everyone at Wallace knows how much I adore Alex and how happy I am to see her, to see all that she has accomplished. She will be moving on to middle school in September, and Wallace will not be the same without her. I definitely echo that sentiment. Wallace will not be the same. Thank you, Alex, for being such an amazing person. We will certainly miss you, but always remember, once a wildcat, always a wildcat." Let's hear it for Alexandra, our March student.
Next, I would like to welcome Principal Sorfin of the Hoboken Middle School to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Please welcome Lakshmi Dipali Gajela to the podium as Hoboken Middle. Ms. Rozmester nominated Dipali for this honor for several reasons. Although new to Hoboken Middle School family this year, Dipali's sweet and kind disposition coupled with her determination are assets to our school community. Dipali consistently strives for excellence in all her endeavors. She maintains an A or higher average in E L A in math, completes assignments diligently, and often challenges herself with E L A, I X L skills at a 10th or 11th grade level. Her willingness to lend a helping hand to others and her positive role model modeling are commendable, contributing to a genuine sense of support among her peers. Dipali consistently upholds the Hoboken Middle School expectation with a positive attitude, making her a pleasure to have in class as we watch her shine and grow. In social studies, Dipali demonstrates kindness, intelligence, and generosity daily. She maintains an A in class and actively assists classmates after completing her own work. Her great engagement in class, discussions, and her cheerful demeanor brighten our learning environment, making her a valuable member of our community. Dipali's curiosity and interest in science have led her to explore various content areas with enthusiasm. Her intention to detail, friendly personality, and creativity have resulted in excellence in hands-on projects with group partners. Her caring nature and positive contributions make her an invaluable asset to any classroom. Mr. Metcalf shares that he believes Dipali has a bright future ahead and will be achieving great things. In the arts, pre-AP dance, or pre-AP dance teacher consistently shares that Dipali consistently demonstrates motivation, preparedness, and her pursuit of excellence and mature demeanor set a positive example for her peers, embodying tiger pride, accountability within our school community. It has been a pleasure to have Dipali in class, and we look forward to her continued success. Beyond academics, Dipali actively participates in after-school clubs such as Yerba Club and Student Council. In Student Council, she shows initiative in event planning and ensures inclusivity among members, reflecting her leadership qualities and commitment to community involvement. Dipali's friend Amber describes her as a good friend due to her kindness, excellent grades, and active involvement in clubs. Dipali's recognition as Student of the Month reflects her dedication and contributions to H M S, and Amber is glad that she is being recognized. When asked about receiving Student of the Month, Dipali expressed pride in herself and gratitude for her experience at H M S, especially given the challenge of moving from another country. In her spare time, Dipali enjoys playing the saxophone, reading, and playing chess. She aspires to become either a cardiologist or a neurosurgeon in the future. Thank you, Dipali. We are grateful that you joined our school community, and I look forward to your continued efforts in excellence. Please join me in a round of applause for Hoboken Middle School's Student of the Month, Lakshmi Dipali Gajela.
At this time, I'd like to invite the Principal of Hoboken High School, Ms. Robin Pica Pietra.
Good evening, everyone. Standing here is the magnificent Paz Delatory, Hoboken High School's March Student of the Month. I didn't think she was here because I'm so used to looking back to see if my kids walked in, and I'm like, oh, my God, Alex, text or do something. And then all of a sudden, I saw them sitting there. Paz is an amazing young lady, who I have had the pleasure to get to know over the past three years. It really is hard to believe that she is finishing up her junior year, as it was only yesterday that she came in wide-eyed as a freshman. She has not stopped since. Challenging herself with pre-AP and AP coursework, she boasts a 3.96 GPA and with her first semester of her junior year has a 4.40 GPA, so I'm confident will be well over four. This will serve her well. As Mr. Terry shared, Paz is a dedicated student with an ambitious list of colleges that she looks forward to applying to next year, including University of Southern California and Clemson, among others. She's involved in a host of co-curricular activities and is a three-sport athlete: volleyball, swimming, and lacrosse, and according to her coaches, gives 150%. She does all of this and holds a job. Ms. Delarosa had a lot to say. Why does she not? She said she's a leader among her peers and she is a joy to have in class. She is currently in Ms. Delarosa's Spanish III Advanced Course. She's a very versatile student, determined, meticulous, responsible, and dependable. Among her wonderful characteristics, one that is rare in high school students, is her fantastic way of planning and organizing herself. She is knowledgeable in many topics such as history, economics, political science, and current events. She also has a strong sense of identity with her culture, which she uses to her benefit. Paz has shown high dedication and motivation through her actions in class and school. She is honest, genuine, and trustworthy. She's a mature young lady, and she always impresses me with her talents. Mr. Huggins shared that she is responsible, curious, and a kind student. She wants to learn. She is a pleasure to have in class, and her thoughtful comments and questions serve to improve the academic rigor in our AP Language and Comp and our AP Capstone courses. Her questions often clarify the subject matter for the entire class. Ms. Perry shared that Paz is down-to-earth, which I can really totally see. She really keeps things at a very honest level. She is happy when things are going well, and she asks thoughtful questions when she does not understand a topic. She works well with others, has confidence, and is conscientious about her grades. A delight to have in class. Last but not least, Ms. Nellen shared Paz is a strong leader in the class. She is definitely the leader in her lab group, hard worker, and she has such an even personality. She takes responsibility for her own learning and can be relied upon to follow through. She also has a great positive attitude and outlook. She keeps things in perspective, and so she does not overreact. Overall, an amazing person with a bright future ahead of her. And I think everything that was said here is going to serve you really well, along with that fabulous GPA. We couldn't be prouder of Paz, and we congratulate her as our March Student of the Month.
Congratulations to all our Students of the Month. We are so proud of you, and it's just always a thrill to get to hear from your school community how much you mean to them and what great examples that you're setting and just all the wonderful things that you are doing. We will now hear from our Student Government Representative. I'd like to welcome the Hoboken High School Student Government Representative, Jenna Cerio, to the podium for her report highlighting current events.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Cerio, and I am the Hoboken High School Student Government School Board Representative this evening. It is an honor to speak to you this evening and provide you with an update on the latest key achievements from Hoboken High School. I would like to start by congratulating the members of Hoboken High School Class of 2024 and the received acceptances to 104 colleges and universities, both nationally and internationally. Next, on the Red Wings Care Coalition, the National Honor Society, Student Government, and Spanish Honor Society, our three student organizations are hosting the tradition of the senior citizens' prom on May 2nd, 2024, at Hoboken High School. We are inviting 100 Hoboken senior citizens to come enjoy our dinner, dancing, and music. More details to follow on this amazing event. The Hoboken High School Red Wings are at the Hudson County Teen Arts Festival today and tomorrow, and if there are any questions, please email Ms. Miller about questions and tickets about Harry Potter. For some recent news on athletics, we'd like to congratulate Red Wings Varsity Baseball Team on the 13-3 win over Lincoln High School. Peter Stelly picked up his first varsity win. The offense was led by Vincenzo Torre, who went two-for-four with a triple and Max Casaza's three-run homerun for the, for over the right field fence. Next home game, Thursday, 4:30, versus Snyder High School. Our Hoboken Red Wings Varsity Softball Team had dominated the field recently with an outstanding victory over Hudson Catholic High School with the final score of 17-1. Our team soared to victory on the road this afternoon. And huge congratulations to all the players, coaches, and supporters for this impressive win. Let's keep up the amazing momentum as we continue to strive for success this season. The Hoboken Varsity Red Wings emerged victorious against the Lincoln Lions in two sets in Jersey City, and the record for the season now stands at 5-1. Back to Student Government. This past week, the Hoboken High School Student Government Philanthropic Committee made 232 sandwiches and donated them to the residents of the Hoboken Homeless Shelter. We would like to thank Megan Stelly, Haley Dobson, and Genevieve Fink for their tireless organization for this yearly event. And finally, to round out this report, our monthly luncheon will, with Hoboken High School Administration, will be held on Monday, April 19th, 2024, at 12:00 P. M. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for always supporting our Student Government in Hoboken High School. We look forward to seeing you at our events, and go Red Wings!
Thank you so much, Jenna. That was a really thorough report, and it's always great to hear all of the wonderful things going on at Hoboken High School, especially all those very exciting college acceptances. So next, we'll be transitioning into reports. I know some of our families probably have bedtime to get home to, so if you want to take a moment and leave us, but Dr. Johnson, do you have a superintendent's report this evening? Wonderful, Dr. Johnson.
We're good? Okay, so, good evening. I do have a brief report this evening. As you know, we've kind of talked about it a few times, but I'm excited to report out that the Blue Ribbon Certification Process in the district began today at Grant Elementary School this morning. It was the first school in our district to be visited by our assessor. We look forward to each of our schools being visited over this week and next week, and we look forward to the feedback that we're going to receive as each of our schools strive to become Blue Ribbon Schools of Excellence. On this agenda this evening, you will also see a revision for the 2024-2025 school year calendar. After our Governance Committee discussed it, the revision actually moves next year's spring break from the week of April 21st back to the week of April 14th, giving the district one extra day at the end of the school year, just in case there's any kind of weather catastrophe, making our last day of school Wednesday, June 18th, as opposed to Friday, June 20th. Next week is the Hoboken Public Education Foundation Gala. We are extremely excited about what the evening is going to bring. Funding plans this year range from wellness to safety to fine and performing arts initiatives and to STEM and diversity programs of SAT and AP prep and college tours, field trips, and technology and professional development, along with a year dedicated to the sciences. So April 25th is sure to be a night that we're all going to remember. And because of the work and generosity of the H P E F, the Hoboken Public School District is going to be hosting its first annual district-wide art show over the weekend of April 2024. over the weekend of April 27th and April 28th. More is going to come out about the art show. There's already been one invitation that's been sent out, but families will receive some blasts of emails, invitations, as well as the community. This art show is going to display over 3,000 pieces of original artwork from students across the district. Each piece of artwork is inspired by a field trip to a museum that was funded by the HPEF this year and supported by Curricular Learning in the following units of study. The show is going to be spectacular, so I would definitely say mark your calendars and don't miss it. And finally, Staff Appreciation Week is scheduled for the week of May 6th through May 10th. There's a number of nice surprises that are scheduled for our staff on each day from central office, the principals and vice principals, and also the PTOs. So also mark your calendars for that if you would like to send a special thank you to a teacher, to a paraprofessional, a clerk, to a custodian, to anyone in the buildings that you would like to just send a warm thank you to. We're all really excited to show our gratitude to all those that do everything they can to support our students day in and day out. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Ms. Good, do you have a Business Administrator's Report this evening?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Next, we'll move into Committee Reports. We'll start with Curriculum with Mr. Granja.
Good evening, and I do not have a significant report to share to the board tonight. I will state that the Subcommittee did meet on the 11th of April, and in attendance were myself, Ms. Katamatory, Dr. Johnson, Ms. Rodriguez Gomez, and Ms. Angley. The only thing that I would add in addition to what Dr. Johnson said is that the Department of Education has taken an interest of, you know, we've had a noticeable increase in school performance. We've reported it here, it's been in the press, and the Department of Education has come to examine us, and they're visiting Brand Elementary School in something that we inside the committee affectionately call "the Hoboken Way." Other than that, the only other action item is 9.01. We have approval of some additional field trips, and I encourage you to vote in favor. Thank you very much. Back to you, Ms. McGurk.
Thank you, Mr. Granja. I will turn it over to Mr. Delatorre for Facilities.
The Facilities Committee met on Wednesday, April 10th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. McGurk, Ms. Delara, Mr. Callagie, and myself. We discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. I did want to share a few other updates. Facilities use requests, as you'll see in the agenda. The Pulse with Peter B. will be hosting the Bala Menendez Debate here at Demeris on May 15th. Doors at Connors School. Due to supplier delays, door installation for the top of the staircase at Connors has been postponed to a later date. Scaffolding here at HMS. There's a meeting with an engineers in two weeks to survey the building one last time. Once we receive the okay, the scaffolding will come down, most likely closer to the end of the school year. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Delatorre. For the Finance Report, we turn it over to Ms. Kana.
Thank you. Good evening. The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, April 10th at 11:30 AM. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. Good, Ms. Katamatory... Oh, sorry. Ms. Angley, Mr. Clubfeld, and myself. We reviewed and recommend Agenda Items 11.01 through 11.15 for approval. There are two items I would like to point out. 11.2 is the renewal of the food service provider contract with Chartwells. And last but not least is 11.15, the approval of the revised tentative budget to be submitted to the committee. And just to remind the public, subsequent to the county superintendent's approval of the tentative budget, the board will welcome community input at its annual public budget hearing, which has been rescheduled to take place on April 30th. The Hoboken Board of Education will, after the public hearing, vote to formally adopt the proposed school district budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year at a public meeting to be held on May 14th, 2024. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Kana. We'll turn it over to Ms. Katamatory for Governance.
Good evening. The Governance Committee met on Wednesday, April 10th, 2024. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Norwood, Ms. McGurk, and myself. The committee discussed all agenda items and recommend all for approval. As is typical throughout the year, there are a number of appointments, resignations, retirements, leave requests, et cetera, approval of new substitutes, and workshops. And today's agenda includes specifically the following. 10.01 through 10.03 includes the acceptances of resignations, including the retirement of Mr. Edwin Johnson, head custodian at the high school. We wish Mr. Johnson a happy and long retirement, thanking for his service to the district and to our students. 10.04 through 10.06 and 10.09 through 10.12 include various appointments for the current school year and next school year, as well as to support our summer programs of certified paraprofessional and volunteer staff. 10.07 includes internal transfers between the district's schools. 10.13 through 10.14 cover the rescission of an appointment and a new appointment of staff in connection with the district's production of Harry Potter. 10.15 and 10.16 cover appointments of staff related to the district's ESY summer program. 10.17 and 10.18 cover the required annual appointment of the district's tenured, certificated staff and administrators for the 24-25 school year. 10.19 includes the revision to the 24-25 school year calendar that Dr. Johnson described a short while ago, moving the spring break to the week before and allowing us to end school on the 18th as opposed to after the Juneteenth holiday on the 19th. 10.20 covers approval of leave requests. And 10.22 and 10.23 are approval of staff in connection with Passport to Learning for their current school year, as well as approval of additional compensation to certain staff in connection with the District Black History Month celebration. And finally, 10.22 or 24 includes the approval of various workshops and conferences to be attended by our staff and faculty. And that is my report.
Thank you, Ms. Katamatory. Ms. Norwood, do you have a Wellness Committee Report?
I do, thank you. Good evening. The Wellness Committee met on Wednesday, April 10th. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Delatorre, Ms. Delara, and myself. There are no Wellness items on the agenda, however, the committee discussed a number of items. Hudson County will be holding a health fair in the high school gym on April 27th. The county will be offering a variety of health screens and conducting outreach for services they provide to the community. In June, the district is planning a clean eating event led by district parent Melissa Vanishai, owner of Baked by Melissa cupcakes. The invitation-only event is intended to support district families with food insecurity. The goal of the program is to reduce food scarcity in our community and help teach easy strategies to convert convenient foods into healthier options. With a generous donation from Acme Supermarkets, participants will be given cooking tools, recipes, ingredients, and a cooking lesson. Some of the ingredients will have been grown in the district's Urban Garden Aquaponics Towers, which are being tended to by students in the Transitional Program for 18- to 21-year-old special needs students. The Hoboken Public Education Foundation will be sponsoring a 5K run in September as a fundraiser and to encourage wellness. We encourage all to participate. Hoboken High School will be holding a football camp for younger students the afternoon of June 17th, which is a half-day in the district, and the second-to-last planned day of school. On July 21st, there will be a second football camp, a different one, that is sponsored by FlexWorks, featuring Giants quarterback Daniel Jones. And that will... There's one more? The Hoboken High School weight room will be getting a makeover this summer before the start of the football season. The cost of the makeover will be largely covered by $5,000 remaining from last summer's football camp, a $10,000 donation from Planet Fitness, and revenue from this summer's football camps. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Norwood. Thank you, everyone, for your Committee Reports. Much appreciated. I'd like to turn to my President's Report, and before I start, I'd like to remind everyone, if you haven't gotten tickets to Harry Potter already, get them while you can. It is coming up next month. Opening night is on Wednesday, May 15th. There's a Wednesday show and a Thursday show, both at 5:00 PM. Friday night, which is the 17th, is at 7:00 PM. And then there are two matinees over the weekend on the 18th and the 19th at 2:00 PM. This is the North American high school premiere of Harry Potter and the Cursed Child, so do not miss your opportunity. I know I went on to grab some tickets for some relatives the other day, and it's slim pickings out there, so get your Harry Potter tickets while you can. Much like, and transitioning completely, because I had forgotten about that and I didn't add it to the beginning of my report. Much like our students invest time in their studies throughout the school year, with the summer months nearing, professional development training is something that, as a school district, we must continuously invest in. Knowing that literacy drives our students' success in school, we place a particular focus on ensuring that our teachers have all the tools in their toolboxes that they need to meet the individual need of each and every student. So during this upcoming summer, we will be sending all new kindergarten to fifth-grade teachers to the Institute for Multisensory Education Training for multisensory reading, so that they too will have the same level of knowledge and the same strategies that their colleagues do when teaching 90-minute literacy blocks that we have in elementary school. And that includes both our dual-language kindergarten and dual-language first-grade teachers. And if you haven't had a chance to kind of find out what that multisensory reading is, the district had hosted a curriculum night, I think, back in December. And I know I definitely did not know just how multisensory it was, and I have seen the difference it's made in my own child, and I think we can see the differences across the district in terms of scores. We're extremely excited to forge a partnership with the Dyslexia Institute for Literacy and Learning. That highly-regarded staff is going to lead 20 of our kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers, one at each grade level at each school, plus special education teachers, through their classroom certification process in August. And in June, they will lead eight reading specialists and special educators through the Associate Master Certificate Program, making the Hoboken Public School District highly trained and skilled to tackle literacy with the goal of ensuring that all students are reading at or above grade level. Our investment in teacher training and development does not stop at literacy. Our teachers will also engage in Project Lead the Way STEM training, advanced placement course training, and training in the content area of mathematics over the summer months. The investments that have been made in staffing and professional development over the last nine years are a large part of why this growing school district is now the top-performing traditional K-12 district in Hudson County. As Board of Education and our central office administrative team, we want to invest in our teachers because what they give back to our students in return is priceless. We recognize it and do not want to short-change our main priority: educating Hoboken's children. And as many of you all know, that priority is funded primarily by the local tax levy paid by the citizens of Hoboken. And I think everyone in this room knows that budget season is really in full swing. And as Ms. Kana reported out earlier, Item 11.15 on this evening's agenda represents a revised tentative budget for the 2024-2025 school year. Back in March, we approved a tentative budget for the year, and that tentative budget included all school and department requests with no cuts or reductions. So between that time and really this past week, the budgetary requests are evaluated and adjustments then are made to mitigate the impact on taxpayers while maintaining investments in our students, staff, and facilities. That process is now concluded, and we are preparing to present the budget to the community. As Ms. Kana mentioned earlier, we'd like to invite the entire community to join us on April 30th here at 7:00 PM. In an effort to provide an opportunity for community members to better understand the 2024-25 budget, there will also be two Q&amp;A sessions in addition to the public hearing. The first will be held on May 7th at 10:00 AM at the Calabro School, and the second will be held on May 7th at 6:00 PM here at Hoboken Middle School, or the Demeris Building, as it's better known. You can also find updates on the budget on the Board of Education section on the district website. When you go into that dropdown, there's a section that says 24-25 Budget. And we also have an email address if people have questions, which is hpsdbudget@hoboken.k12 nj.us. I know the number-one question everyone has is around that increase, and I'm really pleased to report that the overall amount of the increase has come down. So when we look at what the impact will be, the average assessed valuation here in Hoboken for a property is $526,000. So the increase for a property at that value will be approximately $385 for the year, or $32 a month. And to give you some additional context, homes that have that tax valuation are typically selling here in Hoboken in the neighborhood of $820,000. A home with an assessed valuation of $1 million would see an increase of $731 annually, or $61 per month. Homes at that valuation are typically selling for over $1.5 million. And to provide some additional context to the community, when you look at school tax rates here in New Jersey, both general and equalized, as well as the percentage of the overall tax bill that we invest in schools here in Hoboken, Hoboken sits at the bottom of Hudson County and the bottom of the state of New Jersey. The increase that's included in Item 11.15 this evening, which is an increase of 14.99% of the tax levy, will not change that statistic by much. We might move up one or two places, but you're still at the bottom. With our enrollment growing annually, these responsible investments will enable us to serve our student body and keep achievement growing. So that is my report for this evening, and now we'll go into public comments on Agenda Items. Thank you. Moving on to the Consent Agenda, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Good, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Ms. Katamatory?
Obstain on Item 14.02 as it relates to Hoboken United, and yes to everything else.
Ms. Deliara?
Yes.
Mr. Delatorre?
Yes.
Mr. Granja?
Yes.
Ms. Kana?
Yeah.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Norwood?
Obstain on 11.13 and yes on the rest.
Ms. McGurk?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Good. Now moving on to public comments on Agenda and non-Agenda Items. Ms. Good, do we have any speakers signed up?
No.
All righty, we are not going into executive session, so that will conclude our meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.